Worthy of all of our praise and we humbly fall to our knees before you. This afternoon, we ask you to bend down to guide us through this meeting, leading us in discussions and in decisions. Father, may the words of our mouth, the meditations of our heart, may they be pleasing to you. In Jesus, our Lord and Savior's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Gay. We'll move on and do the first proclamation, which today is going to be National Cleanup Day. So I'll pass the microphone to Councilman Eddie Sauer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas National Cleanup Day was founded to celebrate the importance of uniting individuals to care for our outdoor spaces and remove litter so our trails, parks, and community spaces remain pleasant and unmarred by waste. And whereas the purpose of National Cleanup Day is to assist in promoting a clean outdoors for all by creating a call to action to help mobilize communities to beautify their areas. And whereas, as a national network of stewards of the outdoors, National Cleanup Day is dedicated to keeping our nation's urban, rural, and outdoor public spaces free of litter and trash. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2021 as National Cleanup Day in Amarillo, and encourage all citizens to do their part to help keep our city beautiful. Given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of April, Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmember Elaine Hayes, Councilmember Frida Powell, Councilmember Howard Smith, and Councilmember Eddie Sauer. And so we have here to speak to us on this just a little bit, Bob G. Yellem and Shelley. And you know, Bob G. really has kind of stepped in about the time that we went on council four years ago, and he had a headstrong goal of wanting to do what he could to help Amarillo be clean, and he's had a major impact on helping us get these days scheduled so that we are doing our best to try and help clean Amarillo. And I think it's had a pretty big effect, and we're just grateful for citizens like you, Bob G., and just grateful for your part and how you've helped get others involved. And so now then, I think April the 24th, there's several different areas. I know there's one going out on at Thompson Park. You've got one going. I'm not sure where your area is. I know that Teresa Kennedy has hit me up to come help with the barrio. And so I know that it's become quite an impressive thing even here in town. So thank you, Bob G.
All right, thank you all. And I hope this will be our biggest event in the world actually, because we are dealing with the entire panhandle with 62 school districts participating. So I hope it will catch up, you know, because the litter is a big problem around the block. I think we can make a big impact. And what I'm planning to do, you know, I'm teaming up with the Contagion Athletics, and we are inviting all healthcare workers to continue. We're going to go along the Amarillo Boulevard at the different stages. So anybody can come and join. It'll be like a parade basically. It's going to be dandy. So I'm hoping it'll be a big event, and I think everybody will come and join. And also, this Thursday and Friday at the Mann Elementary School, Mann Middle School and the sixth grade campus, they're doing a parade with the students. They're hanging art posters and the teachers, you know, they're going to be a parade around 7:30 to 8:00. So you all can join that thing. It'll be a nice one. I'm inviting all media for that event. And I think it's going to create a lot of enthusiasm among the school district as well as throughout the city basically. I think this is the real good one actually. And it will really create a lot of interest among people, you know. So that's what I hope. So that's all I want to say. And you know, and the city is doing well with us, so I'm very happy with it. So far, so good. I hope 24th will be a great weekend for everybody.
Thank you, Bob G. We agree, and we appreciate all the work that you and your committee are doing. But most importantly, you're opening the door for citizens who care about this issue and want to see our neighborhoods and our city be a clean city to get involved. This is your chance. So jump on the website or on the Facebook page and find out where you can volunteer for this event.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your being here today.
All right, thank you.
The next proclamation that we have is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I'm going to pass the reins to Councilmember Elaine Hayes. Elaine?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas sexual assault affects many people in Amarillo either as a victim, survivor of sexual assault, or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And whereas in Amarillo for 2020, Family Support Services advocates responded to 269 victims of sexual assault. Sexual assault nurse examiners provided services to 378 victims, 301 of whom were children. The crisis hotline advocates provided 815 instances of crisis intervention, help, information, and referrals to sexual assault-related calls. And whereas Family Support Services staff and volunteers support advocacy, healing, and prevention by offering crisis services, emergency safe shelter, counseling, support groups, awareness, and education to schools, the legal system, and community providers within the Amarillo and surrounding communities. And whereas during the month of April, Family Support Services will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of sexual violence and victims of sexual violence. And Family Support Services will be intensifying the need for citizen involvement in efforts to reduce sexual assaults through public education and changing public attitudes. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Amarillo, hoping to increase community support for Family Support Services and increase awareness of the healing potential for survivors. Given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of April 2021, Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And we have Kathy Tortorio with Family Support Services here with us today to make some comments. Kathy?
Good afternoon. Just want to thank the city council for allowing us to be here to make that proclamation. One sobering statistic I will share. Last year, the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiners Program, with those exams, 77% of those individuals who were examined because of a sexual assault were children. 77%. It is a scourge not just in the nation, but unfortunately in our beautiful city. So as we work together, Family Support Services, law enforcement, district attorneys, prosecutors, The Bridge Children's Advocacy Center, and other entities, we are still so committed to seeing this type of crime reduced and hopefully someday ended. And just can't thank you enough from everyone here at Family Support Services, City Council, for taking this so seriously to make this a part of your meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate the work you guys do in our city, and we definitely want to support and help in any way that we can. The next proclamation is Amarillo Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And reading that today will be Councilmember Howard Smith.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be able to present this proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Amarillo recognize the crucial need for efforts by both individuals and groups to promote awareness of the plight of abused children, to work toward prevention of violence against children, and to provide services and treatment to these small victims of their families. And whereas Amarillo Area Court appointed special advocates, The Bridge Children's Advocacy Center, DFPS, and Family Support Services advocate for children of abuse and neglect. And whereas Potter and Ramon Kennedys confirmed 1,074 children suffered from some form of abuse or neglect in 2020. And whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them thrive in a safe environment, as every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, feel secure, and be free from all types of abuse and neglect. And whereas effective child abuse prevention and intervention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, The Bridge Children's Advocacy Center, Family Support Services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, victim advocates, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. Now therefore, we mayor and council members of the city of Amarillo do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Amarillo Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And in so doing, urge all citizens and institutions, both public and private, to support The Bridge Children's Advocacy Center, AAC CASA, and Family Support Services, as well as other partner agencies in their efforts to increase awareness of and services for abused and neglected children in our community. Given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of April 2021, signed by Mayor Ginger Nelson and Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And we have Linda Coronella here to make some comments about this.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor Nelson, and council members, for your willingness to bring awareness of child abuse to the community. Each year, a little over 400,000 children in the United States suffer some form of abuse and neglect. Last year in Texas, over 68,000 children were confirmed victims of abuse, with 1,074 being local children. Many children have been exposed to long-term abuse, and unless someone intervenes, these children will continue to experience repeated abuse, and sadly, some will result in fatalities. So I'm asking you, the community, to report abuse if you see or you suspect that it's going on. All it takes is one person to intervene and change the trajectory of a child's life. Again, thank you, Mayor Nelson, and council members for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Thank you, Linda. We appreciate all of the work that CASA does in our community alongside The Bridge. I'm not sure if Shelley is on or not, but also the work that Family Support Services done. You guys just make a huge impact, and even if it's just one life, one kid's life who's affected, we know that it's all worth it. So we appreciate you. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Next is Alcohol Awareness Month, and Councilwoman Frida Powell will be reading that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. It'd be an honor and a privilege to permit to present this proclamation. Whereas according to the State Department of Health and Human Services, alcohol is the most commonly used substance in Texas, and an estimated 14.8 million people ages 12 and older in America are classified as having an alcohol use disorder. And whereas according to the 2020 Alcohol Opinion Survey, over half of the respondents ages 19 to 25 years, which is 61.4% reported using alcohol in the past month, and of those users, 52.5% reported binge drinking in the past month. And whereas alcohol is the largest contributor to the leading cause of death among young people in America. Alcohol misuse strains the health care, the criminal justice, the substance abuse treatment system, and impacts educational and workplace productivity. The misuse of alcohol can lead to alcohol poisoning, injury, and chronic health problems. And whereas social pressures and cultural norms have contributed to excessive alcohol use. And whereas with commitment and support, these and other substance use and mental health issues can be prevented. The focus of Alcohol Awareness Month is to assist in the prevention of substance use and promote mental health. And whereas through Alcohol Awareness Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent these problems today. Now therefore, we mayor and council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Amarillo, and encourage all citizens to take advantage of the information that will be provided by the city of Amarillo and partnering organization Andrea's Project. We and others across the United States need to recognize the seriousness of substance abuse and mental health issues in our communities, the power of prevention, and the tireless efforts of those working to make a difference. The daily actions by individuals combined with the actions of families, communities, and coalations can combine to make up the larger, bold movement of prevention. Given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of April 2021, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And here to accept the proclamation would be LaViza Matthews.
Thank you so much. We are all meeting here today. This is all of our board for Andrea's Project. And the leader of our group is David Elizalde, and he's got just a few words to say. And thank you, council.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Frida, for the amazing words and counsel of Amarillo. We know that so many people are affected by the devastation of alcohol here in our city. We appreciate all the coordination from different entities to be able to just make changes. And this is just another part of saying, or another step to say that we're making changes in Amarillo in the right way. So thank you.
And David, I appreciate you and the amazing strength that God has given you to continue this project as well, and the changes that you're making, you know, within our city. So thank you, David, for your heart and for your passion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see Chief Birkenfeld there with you too, and I think that's wonderful that you had your whole board there, LaViza and David. So thank y'all for the support that y'all are bringing to this issue in our community. And certainly, our police department is on board with making these changes. They see day in and day out the cost, not just to families, but just the cost to our overall city that alcohol decisions make. So we just applaud all of you guys and say, don't quit. Please keep doing that work in our city.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next proclamation is Fair Housing Month, and Councilmember Howard Smith, along with the Amarillo Realtors Association, will be reading that proclamation.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to present this, especially since I've been in the real estate business for a long time. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas the Amarillo Association of Realtors is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. Whereas our social fabric, economic, economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, we mayor and council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in Amarillo. A community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Amarillo. This is given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of April 2021. It's signed by Mayor Ginger Nelson and then council members Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. Denise Price is here to make a few comments.
Hey, thank you, Howard. On behalf of the 1,000 members of the Amarillo Association of Realtors, I appreciate the city council for designating April as Fair Housing Month. This year, Amarillo Realtors are observing the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968 with the formation of a new diversity committee that will support and engage in programs and initiatives that will help advance fair housing across all demographics. In addition, this month, two courses that shine a lot on housing discrimination and segregation have been scheduled. Fair Housing Month signifies a recommitment to everyone to expand equal access to housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, and thank you, Howard. The work that the Realtors Association does in our city is not limited to just one issue, and although this is a very important issue. So thank you, Denise, for being with us today. And Howard, as always, we appreciate your work at the Realtors Association, but also on the council. Our next proclamation is Beta Sigma Phi Week, and Councilmember Frida Powell will be reading that.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Beta Sigma Phi is the world's largest Greek letter women's service, cultural and social organization. And whereas the badge of the organization signifies life, learning, and friendship by its Greek symbols, beta, sigma, phi. And in pursuit of those goals, these women raise money and donate time and effort to those in need everywhere. And whereas local Beta Sigma Phi chapters this year support Hope Lives Here. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through the 23rd, 2021, as Beta Sigma Phi Week in Amarillo, and urge our citizens to support this organization and give honor to all Beta Sigma Phi sisters. Given under our hands and seal of office this 13th day of April 2021, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And here to accept the proclamation is Ms. Brenda Graham.
Thank you, Frida. I appreciate that. And as you know, the good work that the Beta Sigma Phi Organization does this year, as you mentioned, our service project is Hope Lives Here, where we take veterans who have PTSD, and we pair those with service animals. So that's been an ongoing thing we've done for the last couple of years. I also want to mention that this year's Beta Sigma Phi Woman of the Year is Frida Powell, and Past Woman of the Year is Ginger Nelson. So just thank those ladies for being the awesome pillars in the community that they are, and glad that we're able to recognize them. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Brenda, thank you so much. I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, we appreciate the work that you guys do to give back into our community, for sure. The last proclamation we have today is National Public Health Week, and Councilmember Eddie Sauer will be reading that. Eddie, I think you're on mute. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, it even went up on the screen. Thank you for this opportunity, and it really is an honor and a pleasure to get to read this proclamation. Whereas the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, is educating the public and policymakers about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas changing our health means ensuring conditions where everyone can be healthy. And whereas health must be a priority in designating our communities from healthy housing to parks and playgrounds so everyone can safely live, work, learn, and play. And whereas education is the leading indicator of good health, giving people access to better jobs, incomes, and neighborhoods. And whereas some of the greatest achievements of public health include vaccinations, safer workplaces, safer and healthier foods, control of infectious diseases, fluoridation of drinking water, public health preparedness, and recognition of avoiding tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs. Staying at a healthy weight, eating right, and keeping active is critical to helping people live longer and healthier lives. And whereas National Public Health Week has increased insignificance this year as our community mourns the loss of more than 700 lives to COVID-19, and as we have come to recognize just how essential our public health efforts and public health workers truly are. Public health and environmental health staff have worked to slow the spread of the virus through testing, case investigation, contact tracing, and vaccination. These dedicated public health professionals on the front lines of our response to COVID-19 have worked tirelessly for over a year. Now therefore, we mayor and city council members of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through 11th, 2021, as National Public Health Week in Amarillo, and urge all citizens to express their gratitude to all public health professionals who are seeing us through this crisis and who are building a more robust, comprehensive, and equitable public health system for all. Given under our hands and seal of office this 7th day of April 2021, the Honorable Ginger Nelson, Councilmembers Elaine Hayes, Frida Powell, Howard Smith, and Eddie Sauer. And here to speak to that is our own rock star of sorts, Casey Stoughton. And Casey, you've done such a great job heading this up that you've put us on the map nationally, and we are just really grateful for the entire effort that you and your staff, and actually, the whole city team has done, making Amarillo such a much safer and healthier place even through this past year. So we're just grateful to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I could not appreciate this team more. We had an opportunity to read the proclamation last week. Mayor Nelson came over to the Civic Center and read the proclamation to our teams. It was a very special day, so there's our team at the Civic Center at the Vaccination Clinic. They're receiving the proclamation, so thank you, Mayor Nelson, for reading that to our team. It was a great day. And what a privilege to be on this panel of proclamations today. I think we all kind of touch public health in somewhere or another from sexual assault and child abuse and fair housing and all of the different proclamations that were read today. So April is certainly a great month to be recognized and just a great group of people to work with. We have an amazing community, a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work. And so I certainly am glad to be on the panel today with the, just the amazing people that were recognized. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Casey, for your work. When I was at the clinic last week, or every time I've been over there, actually, I've visited with some of those RAC nurses that were there on contract, and they're from all over the United States, Ohio, Louisiana, Idaho. But they've been here for weeks at a time, and they've seen a large slice of our population because it's just people coming through, getting vaccinated. And of course, nurses are talking to them while they're trying to distract them from what they're actually doing, you know, sore place on their arm. So I just really enjoyed hearing their stories about how much they have enjoyed working with your team, the Amarillo team, but how much they enjoyed seeing a slice of the Texas panhandle, and they had such nice things to say. None of them surprised me, but it is sort of like being a proud parent. You're always glad to hear people speak nicely of your hometown and the people that work there. So I just wanted to give kudos back to you for the impression that you've made on those local nurses, I'm sorry, those traveling nurses. But also just thank you for the impact that you've had in our community this year. We all feel it. Citizens stop us all the time at church and the grocery store and thank us for the work that the public health team has done in the last year in the community. So this is us officially thanking you. So this is us officially thanking you for, for that. We'll never truly be able to fully understand the sacrifices y'all have made or to fully express our gratitude.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have some announcements. I'm going to hand it over to the city manager. So Jared, just take over and roll through those.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And, and I would, I would just reach back very briefly with your, with your gracious permission to touch on those proclamations. That's a lot of proclamations, and there's not a single one that I wouldn't want on this meeting. You know, as we're going through those, I was proud, you know, Bob G. and all the work that he's doing. I was incensed at some of the data shared, whether it's child abuse, sexual assault, alcohol abuse, or actual awareness, you know, all those other things. I was motivated and I was grateful for, for, you know, I had different emotions for all those. So thank you all for everything that you do for our communities. I know I'm jumping in to say things that I know council's thinking, so I just wanted to share that. If we can, I want to have Laura Storres come in. We have a, y'all may, I, I know that we have, it seems like annually, and I know it's been many, many years for our GFAT, GFPA, Government Finance Officers Association Awards and our PAFR Awards, our Popular Annual Financial Reporting Awards. But the work that we do in finance at the City of Amarillo is second to none, and we've been recognized for it for decades. And it can very easily be taken for granted like it's easy, but it's not. We are financial professionals in the state of Texas and in the United States. And so we have been recognized for our team PAFR, Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, and I want Laura Storres to talk about that. But I definitely wanted to highlight, these awards don't come by accident. They only come through diligent attention to detail in financial reporting and management. And it's, it's only due to the great work that our financial team does that we're able to have this. Laura.
Thank you, Jared. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm going to share my screen just real briefly with you all. Very short presentation. As the city manager mentioned, this is a, a huge accomplishment for our financial team, for our council, and for the City of Amarillo as a whole. What we're looking at today, this is from our fiscal year ending September 30th of 2019. And again, these programs take a while to be evaluated. It actually takes quite a bit of time to even put these documents together. So the GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association, has announced that we received our award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting, which is also known as the PAFR. So what the GFPA does is they evaluate, well, let me first back up for a second. So our PAFR is a very condensed version of our annual financial report. So each year, council receives our comprehensive annual financial report, which is several hundred pages long, that goes through a full external audit. We also submit that to the GFPA for grading, and we have been very fortunate to receive an award on our comprehensive annual financial report for about 44 or 45 years at this point. So a long history there. A more recent program that we have started participating in is the PAFR. The PAFR, PAFR is a very condensed version, about 12 pages summary of that full annual financial report. So we submitted our PAFR to the GFPA, and they evaluated it for reader appeal, understandability, distribution methods, creativity, among some other elements. This is our 10th year in a row that we have received the war, this award related to our PAFR. And along with that, we just completed our next PAFR, which is our September 30th of 2020, PAFR, and it got posted out today on the City of Amarillo's website. If you go out to amarillo.gov and you go under Departments, Public Safety and Organizational Services, Finance and Financial Information, it is posted there. We will also be issuing a press release with some information on how to find that on the City of Amarillo's website. But we're so excited, want to give a special thanks to the financial team for putting together the PAFR, especially Matt Poston. He did the bulk of the work on the submission of the September 30th.
Laura, I think you might have frozen up. There you are. I think we've got you now, Laura.
Oh, did I freeze?
Yeah, you froze up.
Just for a sec.
Okay, so I just, I don't know how much you caught, but just the last part there is another thank you to our finance team, especially Matt Poston. He did a tremendous amount of work on this, and we wouldn't be receiving these awards if we didn't have such a hardworking and dedicated financial staff. So a great thing, and it shows our strong financial team here at the City of Amarillo. So we're really excited about this award.
Mayor, I know that these, as you can see with four day, over four decades of GFPA awards, everything our people do is built on generations of work of people that went before them, whether it's Laura, Shell, you know, there's, there's other, other people I could mention, but we're, we're recognizing some of the, the hot shoes in our, in our organization, you know, the younger people working in that finance department. We want to make sure that we're recognizing the work done by the people that are 10 years from now. But it is a, a piece of work that builds on generations of work here at the City of Amarillo. Finance is one of the things we've done extremely well for, for many, many. We're going to continue doing that as our number one, well, one of our number one things. We have a lot of number one things. But does anybody have any questions for Laura?
No, but I- Good work, Laura. Thank you.
I just had a comment on, if I'm understanding this award correctly, Laura, it's, it's so focused on communication, where the other is the substance of how we manage taxpayer dollars. This is how you communicate how you are managing those dollars, and whether it is readable, it's user-friendly, layman, accessible, and condensed in a way that truly reflects how you're managing dollars in a way that's understandable. And those are two very different things.
Yes, ma'am. You're correct, Laura.
As well, but not be making that accessible, readily available, understandable. And so congratulations for, for this second lane of effective financial management is very important, the communication of what you're doing. So, well done.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Nope, go ahead, Jared.
Well, I was just going to make a few, while we're in announcements, there's also new employees on there, and I wanted to touch on some new employees. We talked about the generational nature of our finance operation. I can reach back to Dean and Michelle and now Laura, and, and we touched on some of the people that are going to be picking up those reins as we go forward. We have a number of new positions to recognize or just make you aware of, because these are all positions and departments that I know y'all have been paying very close attention to, because we've been building customer service, building communications. We talked about communications, we talked about customer service, we talk about yes and in everything that we do. And these people understand it, they get it, and they're going to be responsible for it going forward. First one I want to touch on is our new Assistant Director of Animal Management Welfare. I see you popped up there. His name is Chris Schaefer. He has a bachelor's degree from Arizona State University in Political Science. He's earned his Animal Shelter Management Certificate from the University of the Pacific. He spent a year and a half in shelter operate, as a Shelter Operations Manager in Tempe, Arizona, oversaw the organization's six animal-centric departments, admissions, medical, foster, temporary care, animal care, adoptions. Going to be a huge complimentary add to our team out of animal management, where we're almost fully staffed now, and I could not say even 50 or 60% of that a year ago. So Victoria Medley, the director out there, and now Chris, she's done a great job. Chris is going to start contributing to that immediately. He has all the skills and talents we need, along with the motivation. So he's worked for the Arizona Humane Society in Phoenix. He was also the alternative placement and foster manager for the Humane Society there. So he really has all the skills necessary to, one, be able to manage our, our shelter along with Victoria, but also to be able to speak the language and, and really connect well with all of our rescues, to be able to affect the best live outcomes, the best live outcome scenario that we can possibly get within our shelter. So we're really excited to have Chris with us. Chris, give a wave. Normally, I'd throw it to Victoria or you to say a few things. Got a lot of new people to talk about right now. Council, if you want to go back and get some feedback from any of these people, you do it. But I know you're going to want to, you get a chance to go out and see Chris out at the animal shelter. We're going to be having a open house for our new animal management surgical facility, management facility out there. That's going to be happening, I believe, on, Chris, is it April 22nd?
That's what I heard, yes.
Okay, so we're looking at probably April 22nd. We'll get out a final and confirmed press release on that when it, when it is finally announced. I probably shouldn't have said that. Victoria's probably cross with me right now because it's tentative at this time. But we are looking for an opportunity to get council and all of our public out to the animal shelter, one, so they can see what we're doing out there, but two, so that they can pick up a great new family member. Always put the plug in for them.
I know you're trying to rush through those. I just have to jump in. And Chris, I have to say that one of the most interesting things of your bio is your political science degree, and I think that is really interesting and that you have selected a focus and a part of government services that is very politically sensitive. And so I think that it is a really great foundation and asset to just have that background and, and a lot of that. And so welcome, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're real excited about it, Chris. I got a chance to meet with Chris while he was here for this interview and just told him how much we were looking forward. Like, and at the time, I couldn't really say it's you or it's someone else, maybe a number of people. I really wanted to know just how much we are excited to have this position filled and the good things and good opportunities they're going to leave us there, especially for our animals. So, welcome, Chris. Next, we've got Shannon Tolleson, if you'll pop your camera on and wave at everyone. Shannon is our new Environmental Programs Manager. There she is. She graduated from Oklahoma State with a degree in environmental science, holds over, she has over 15 years of experience in the environmental laboratory water industry. She's a certified environmental specialist, comes to Amarillo from the San Antonio area where she served as a senior laboratory advisor. She brings all the experience in the world. She'll be managing our lab, which is a regional and state-recognized lab, does a lot of good work for not only us, but a lot of neighboring jurisdictions as well as agencies. So Shannon, welcome, welcome to the team. Again, in this situation, I would, I would normally throw it to Jonathan Gresham or someone and say a few good things about you. Jonathan, wave at us. But we're going to, we're going to be moving through these things. I've got, you, you're going to be shocked at how many new employees, new key employees that we're announcing today. But Shannon, welcome so much to the team. And again, council, please feel free to go back and pull anybody up. They'll stay on throughout this entire section of the meeting. Next, we've got Alan Harder, who is our new Assistant Director of Public Works. Now, you might know Alan's name because he came to this position from a engineering role with our CPDNE. So he's been with us for some time and has done a great job with this. Otherwise, he wouldn't have been considered for an Assistant Director role. Alan was born and raised in Borger, Texas, so he's got that hook for Amarillo. A graduate from Oklahoma State with a BS in Civil Engineering in 2008, worked as project engineer for Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper for two years, served as a civil engineer, civil engineering corps officer in the US Navy from 2011 to 2015. So obviously, he's a wonderful person, a great employee, and is going to do great things for Amarillo. Alan joined the Amarillo CPND Engineering Department as a civil engineer in 2016, has been Assistant City Engineer since 2018. He's a licensed professional engineer in the state of Texas, so obviously, he's, he's extremely well-prepared, well-suited to this position in public works. Looking forward to what Alan's going to do with the Public Works Department. We've had a number of key hires in Public Works recently, along with Donnie Hooper, who is our, our Director of Public Works. So Donnie has done a great job of, of staffing up his department with rock stars. Unfortunately, some of those rock stars have come from other departments, which is going to create other, create opportunities. I'm going to talk about another one of those people here in just a minute. But Alan, welcome so much to your new role. I'm looking forward to what you're going to do for, for decades to come. No pressure. I, I alluded to Donnie really stacking his deck, and another one is Stephanie Coggins, who used to be the Assistant to the City Manager, is now the new Public Works Manager. So she's just really moving from one building to another, from City Hall over to Sims, but she graduated from WT with a Bachelor in Business Administration, also with a Master's in Professional Accounting. Before joining the city, she worked with Hastings and also as an outside reporting manager, joined the city in 2012, so been with us for almost 10 years. Served as property accountant, budget analyst, and most recently as Assistant to the City Manager. You're going to do great work in Public Works and hopefully is training for bigger and better things within the City of Amarillo. So Stephanie, you all hear and see her on these, you're used to seeing her on these council meetings. She helps us out with making sure that these things work well, but Stephanie, wave at us. There she is. So y'all know Stephanie. Now, she's going to be in a different building, but still with us. So if you don't see her over here in the City Manager's Office, she's still here. It's okay. And then finally, one thing that I haven't touched on, and I know we talk about the generational impact or the generational nature of what we do. Everything that we do is built upon the work, have done good things for the City of City for decades, for the City of Amarillo for decades. One of those people is our, our City Secretary, Frances Hibbs, who's been with us for over 30 years, much of that time working as the City, City Secretary. She's left her footprint on so much of the things we do and y'all's entire tenure in the city, as the City Councilmembers and as mayor. She's dedicated, she's committed, she's done great things for our organization, but most especially for our community. So we want to just say, she has announced her resignation, her, her retirement, retirement, and I'm somewhat jealous because she's going to be able to do great things in her retirement. She's, but with over 30 years with the city, it's well-earned. And so we want to say thank you to, to Frances on her retire very, very best. I know y'all are going to say the same thing, come by the office and tell her all those things, or maybe say something. Now, now you join me in thanking her for everything done for the city over the decades, but mostly over the, over the recent years in her tenure as City Secretary. That retirement is effective May 5th, by the way, and I left that key, very important part out. Now, in, in, as a result of that notification, we have worked with, to find an interim City Secretary. That interim City Secretary is going to be Leanne Gallman. She's been with the City of Muleshoe for well over 30 years, with 15 years of that being as the City Secretary, five years of that being as the City Manager. So no, she's not here to take my job, but she is here to fill the gap, go through this job search period, to help just keep the, keep the City Secretary's office between the lines and make sure that we leave it in as good a position as possible for the full-time City Secretary after we get through this job search. So she's been, she has a lot of great experience. Like I said, she's been with the City of Muleshoe for a very long time, lives not that far away, and is a former president of the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, has all the qualifications in the world, and will do us a great job standing in for, for Frances once she's retired. So want to welcome Leanne. I know y'all get a chance to, to meet her when you come in, but that's a lot of transitions. We're, these are all part of life. These are all, there is, there is change. We look at challenges as opportunities, and each one of these personnel changes is an example of that. We look forward to what's going to happen going forward. We respect what's happened going in the past. And so with that in mind, I want to say again, thank you to Frances for all the great work that she's done for the community and what she's going to do over the next few weeks, just to make sure that our gratitude is the number one thing that, that sticks out as we go forward. Is there any questions that you have for me or for any of the people we've recognized here? I know that's a lot of people, but they all needed to happen, or they all needed to be recognized. All right.
Yeah, that's a lot of folks. I, I will just pause for a minute to say, Frances, you will be missed, not just, you work so closely and directly with the council, but with many citizens. There are folks all the time that'll say to me, well, I called Frances and she knew the answer. So that's, that is definitely going to be a big hole for, for us at the city, and we just want to say thank you. I know I'm not going to ask you to turn your camera on because I know you don't like that. So we'll let you just sit behind your pretty picture and know that you are a- and know that you are appreciated and valued and you will be missed. Thank you very much for your service. And we say that, I mean, council members may want to jump in and say something, but we say it on behalf of all the citizens that we represent.
Yes. And Francis, I think you and Leanne both need to turn your cameras on, especially Leanne, so that we can see her. But Francis, I just want to extend a gratitude to you and say I appreciate everything you've done for me, especially since I've been in this. You are definitely going to miss. So I appreciate everything that you have done, and thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
I would want to say the same thing. Thank you, Francis. There's never a time that I've not called in and asked for something that you haven't had a reply for me, like in 60 seconds, or it's very seldom do you have to say, let me find out about that. And so I'm just grateful. I am almost to the point of taking for granted that I could always count on you and all the things that you have been able to do for us. And what an exemplary example of a person here that was an employee for the city that exemplified all the great things of our city. And I'm just grateful for the opportunity to have been able to get to know you over this past four years, and I wish you the very best in your retirement. And I'm just, I'm grateful for all that you've done for us and for the city.
I'd like to say, not going to get too repetitive, but the last four years, Francis, she's helped me a lot, not just me, but I'm sure all of the council members. And so I appreciate that very much. I also want to say, Jan Sanders, I understand she's leaving. Also, I met her back in the time I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for eight years, and she was the secretary there. So I appreciate what she's done for the city. Thank you.
Francis, I just want to commend you for your years of service. And truly, you have just been like a walking dictionary for us for the last four years. I am always just amazed how, how much information you just already knew, but how quickly you could access the information and get an answer. So just, that is a value that is not easily replaced. And we just are very grateful for your years. And for me particularly, I don't know how many times it's like it's enough work to take care of all of us and be sure we get all the information we need and responses we need. But how many times I've had to come back and say, could you send me that again, Francis? Or I can't find that now. And you're always so gracious and quick second time around and just, thank you, thank you. You have truly walked us through the last four years just very graciously and with a great heart. So congratulations on your retirement, but we will miss you.
And I just, I just want to say welcome to Leanne. Looking forward to working with her as well.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, well, the next item on our agenda is public address, and we don't have anyone signed up to do that today. So we'll move to agenda item 1A. Anything council in your packet that you had questions on that you want to get those addressed right up front? Okay, moving on to 1B, we'll do coronavirus update. Mr. City Manager?
All right, Mayor, we got Kason Stotan to touch on coronavirus and some other issues. I'll fill in some blanks on anything she doesn't touch on, on a few other issues. And then we've also got possibly some other people that might want to chime in as well. So Kason, take it away.
Perfect. Thank you so much. This has been a wonderful meeting, and I will also miss Francis. She's been just a wonderful person to work here.
And there will be, so we'll let you know when that happens.
Perfect. Good. I love a good party. So as of today, there are a total of 33,869 total cases of COVID-19 in Potter and Randall County, 17,282 cases in Potter County, and 16,582, I'm sorry, 16,587 cases in Randall County. We have a total of 32,914 recoveries, and we're up to 729 deaths here in our community. Leaves us with 226 active cases. The seven-day rolling positivity rate is currently at 4%, and the positivity rate at the drive-through testing site is at 13%. The five-day new case average is at 23 new cases per day. Yesterday, our GA34's hospitalization rate was at 2.3%, and that means that just over 2% of all hospitalized patients have COVID-19. We're currently at status level yellow. The public health drive-through does remain operational. Patients can call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. The vaccination clinic is also operational at the Amarillo Civic Center, and we have moved that to entrance two. And so now we're operating out of entrance two. So just as a reminder to everyone, today we will be open until 7:00 PM. For clinic times and other great information, it's good to check out amarilloalerts.com, especially for like the entrance moving, that kind of information is always there on amarilloalerts.com. All adults are eligible for the COVID vaccine. So we have the Moderna vaccine at the City of Amarillo Clinic, and so we're able to vaccinate anyone who is 18 or over. To date, Emerald Public Health has given 71,469 first doses and 48,982 second doses for a total of 120,457 total doses given. We do have some new information today. Today, we were notified that the FDA announced a pause in the distribution and administration of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, so that they can look into potential adverse events. There have been very few noted, which I think is, is just really an amazing part of the process. So as we report any adverse event to the VAERS system, that information is looked at and responded to very quickly. So this is absolutely part of what we expect and part of the process. So the FDA did pause the distribution and administration of the J&amp;J vaccine. It's, it's important to note that we do not give, we have not received any of the J&amp;J vaccine at the Emerald Public Health Clinic here at the Civic, here at the Civic Center. We have only received the Moderna vaccine, and since we only have the Moderna vaccine, our clinic has not been disrupted. We've also received a lot of questions about masks and schools. There are many important factors that go into this conversation and misconceptions that should be addressed. First, Emerald Public Health has no authority to mandate or eliminate masks at schools. The governor and the TEA, the Texas Education Agency, has given each independent school district the option to require masking in their schools. If the school district chooses to make a change to their masking policy, they must vote on that change. The mask requirement decision belongs to each school board. Second, Emerald Public Health has not developed its own policies regarding isolation and quarantine requirements. We strictly adhere to the isolation and quarantine protocols set forth by the CDC and the TEA. So while it's true that there's a high possibility of, of people who require quarantine, if a group of unmasked students or unmasked teachers test positive, that quarantine is based on CDC and TEA requirements and is not an internal decision made by Emerald Public Health. Third, regardless of any masking decision made by a school board, Emerald Public Health's priority is the health and safety of our community. We will continue to work diligently to provide free contact tracing, COVID-19 testing services, vaccination clinics, and support channels for our entire health district as we work together to slow the transmission of COVID-19. So just wanted to talk to you about that today as well. And then one other piece of information, Ms. Powell asked us for an update on the homebound senior vaccination initiative. So I have some really great numbers on that. Our team delivered vaccine to homebound seniors over, over a 28-day range, visiting 110 homes and five senior living apartments. We gave up 231 first doses and five second doses during that 28-day period. And we have started to go back and give the second doses to all first doses given. We're really looking forward to seeing the patients again. They were really great. But it was, it was a lot of fun to see the homebound seniors. Do you want to have, say a huge thank you to Meals on Wheels and the Panhandle Area Aging, Agency on Aging for their partnership with this project. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Also, questions for Casey. Hey, Casey, I know we've had questions from citizens about will we be doing clinics around the city. It may be too soon to talk about any of those plans, so not specifics, but can you just generally say, tell us the process that you guys are working through to shift to the next mode of meeting people's vaccination needs?
Absolutely. That's a great question. You know, we're still seeing around 1,200 to 1,500 patients a day through the Civic Center. So the lines are short. There's not really a wait time. I know that sounds like a lot of patience, but we're really set up to see a high number of people. So we're still seeing around 1,200 to 1,500 patients a day. So there will be a time when we're able to shift. It will require some reduced times here at the Civic Center so that our team can shift to taking vaccine into different parts of our community. And so we'll certainly let our community know as soon as we're able to do that. With, still seeing, you know, 1,200 to 1,500 patients a day, it's probably not quite time yet, but just as soon as it is, then we will make that announcement. So, but that's what it will, that's generally what it would look like, is a little bit of a reduced day or time here at the Civic Center, and then increased time out in the community. So still giving vaccines, but just in different locations.
Mayor, we've been reinventing ourselves throughout this entire process. As we saw incredible demand at the very start, we expanded our footprint inside the Civic Center. We made sure that people could queue inside the building, thousands of people, so that we could keep them out of the freezing, sub-zero weather. We've taken steps to make sure that we can move lines through there very quickly. And that's just the positive attitude out there. We've, that's not by accident. So the staff's done a great work out there. We've been seeing well over 3,000 a day, you know, for most of this period, and have seen, you know, far larger numbers than that. We're set up to take it as much as 5,000, possibly more. We never saw what we could really do. But we did do over 3,500 on many days. But now that demand is going down, we're having to look at what's our opportunity to reinvent again, with taking vaccinations out to the community, with moving vaccinations to the public health facility, with facilitating other entities' efforts around town. And then that also recognizes that we have many, many more locations offering vaccinations now than what was available to the public early on. And they have plenty of vaccinations available. So many of our drugstores, grocery stores, things like that. So we have a lot of resources available, and we're going to work to make sure that people have access to all of those things. Also, I know something of great interest to people is the American Rescue Plan, which everyone's seen has $1.9 trillion with many billions of dollars, hundreds of billions of dollars going to municipalities and counties across the country to assist with coronavirus response and recovery efforts. We don't have all of the details on that. And as soon as we have those details from the federal entities that are responsible for it, we will make sure and get those options available to council, along with analysis for anything you'd like to see, recommendations in any direction that you would like. But we do not have the information necessary to make that analysis or recommendations at this time. And as soon as we have that, we'll bring it to council so that we can have a plan going forward. It will match very well with our budget process. I'm very hopeful. So as soon as we have that information, we'll give it to you. But right now, it's very general, and not a lot of specific details have been provided to us at this time. Casey, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing that might be helpful to add, sir, is about the funeral assistance program.
Yes. We also have the COVID-associated funeral cost reimbursement program, which is handled through FEMA. So if you or someone you know has lost someone to COVID, there is a resource for you. FEMA is administering that. We are not administering it, but we want to make sure that everyone is aware of it so that they can take advantage of that if it's appropriate. FEMA is administering the COVID-associated funeral cost reimbursement program. And Casey, do you have anything to add on that, or one of our council members?
Yes, sir. That information can be found at amarilloalerts.com.
Now, along with that, I know something that people have also been interested in. Speaking of CARES funding and soon ARP funding, our American Rescue Plan funding, we are, have put on our website, on amarilloalerts.com, our COVID spending summary. So we've given some very detailed information on how much money we have received and where that money has gone. We will update that monthly. And we will also, as we start receiving ARP funds or American Rescue Plan funds, we will incorporate that into this summary so that everyone can see what money we've received and where that money has gone. So we want to make sure that just like we were talking about with the PAFR, the Popular Annual Finance, which is showing people what you're doing with your money, how you're using your money, and being very transparent with how you get your money and use your money. We want to make sure that same philosophy is applied to CARES funds and ARP funds to make sure that people know exactly what's going on with that money. So if there's any questions that I or Casey or anyone else can answer on what we've discussed right now, please let us know.
Jared, I think it's really important that if we could communicate through those graphics that y'all are working on, how this comes with restrictions from the federal government. You know, the funds that go to the airport can't be turned around and used toward public safety. And funds that we're using at public safety have restrictions on them too. And so even with the American Rescue Plan, I've had citizens contact me to say, could we get access to those funds? And part of what you're saying, the takeaway is, we don't yet know what funds, how the funds can be spent, and what types of specific projects will qualify and what will not qualify for American Rescue Plan funds. But even on the CARES Act funds, you know, when you show the pie, which I think is very informative, and I hope as citizens, you'll go and check it out. I wonder, Jared, if we can even do that a little bit better communicating, because people can't tell from looking at it that what we spend at the airport could only be spent at the airport. It wasn't available to supplant public safety salaries or anything like that. So just, if we could even do a better job of communicating on that, how those funds are restricted, that's something that I don't think people, or at least I'm getting questions about that out in the community.
Sure, we can absolutely do that. And the CARES funds were very caveated. They had numerous restrictions, each one of them. For example, well, you hit on the main ones, you know, the FAA funds for the airport could not be spent on anything else. The federal transit administration funds could not be spent on anything but public transit. There were a lot of strings attached to all of the rest of the CARES funds. And it wasn't until the very end of the fiscal year, or the calendar year, rather, that we were able to spend the balance of those funds on public safety salaries. So, you know, we were, just like with everything that we did throughout the last year, we were adapting to changing rules and changing regulations as we went through that process. So we'll make sure and notate which one of those slices of the pie were restricted, and then provide descriptions on how they were restricted, so that people can easily identify what some of the hoops we had to jump through were and what some of the restrictions for those funds were, which would have restricted those monies from being spent on things that we didn't need to spend on. The ARP money will be more flexible in how it's spent. However, I mean, and huge caveat when I say more flexible, it is more flexible than the CARES funds. However, there will still be significant federal reporting regulations associated with those funds. Where the CARES funds came through, came to us as a pass-through from the state, the ARP money will come to us directly from the federal government. So we're going to be reporting directly to the federal government, and those reporting requirements are extensive. They are detailed. And we'll make sure that we do a perfect job, an appropriate job with that. You mentioned, you know, wanting to know some of the ways the ARP money can be spent. There are a number of economic recovery purposes. There's a number of infrastructure purposes like water and wastewater, but not streets or facilities. It allows funding for broadband internet. I think one of the things that was highlighted during during this last year was the need for uh broadband access to everyone for, for work from home, for education from home, for a lot of different uh reasons. So we know very generally some of the areas where money can be spent, but there's a lot of detail yet to be found in those general categories and probably even some areas that have not yet been net, n- mentioned. So uh, once we have gone through those meetings, those virtual meetings and teleconference meetings, uh, we will uh digest it, uh, break it down, and we'll bring it to you for a very detailed conversation about how we can utilize those funds that have been allocated to the City of Amarillo. And how we can coordinate with Potter and Randall Counties to make sure we're not duplicating effort because there are funds that have been allocated there. Twenty-two million roughly to uh Potter County, twenty-six million roughly to uh Randall County. So we want to make sure that however we spend our funds is complementary to however they're spending their funds and not contradictory or duplication.
Questions about that at all, counsel? Jared, let's move on and talk about the budget calendar, Dan.
Right, so uh, we've talked about uh, uh, some of the challenges with COVID. We also have uh a compressed timeline that we're dealing with, with uh our budget. Our election is May first. Uh, we have uh one open seat and four contested seats. Uh, so we have delayed uh the start of council's uh input period into the budget until after we know exactly who our council members are, are. Uh, as a result of, of Senate Bill Two from the previous legislative it has moved our budget under, the end of our budget calendar forward a number of weeks. So we are compressing our budget period on both sides, both the start is starting later and we're having to end it earlier. So we have a very aggressive budget calendar uh in order to accommodate the election and also uh the impacts of, of Senate Bill Two from our previous legislative session. So to explain all of that and to hit some of the dates that we're going to have to hit, and some, a couple of these dates are still in flux. So uh Laura will go through the details of that. Laura Storz, Assistant City Manager, also Chief Financial Officer, and answer any questions you've got. Laura?
All right. Thank you, Jared. I'm going to share my screen, uh, a very brief presentation here. Um. So what we're talking about is the twenty-twenty-one budget and property tax calendar. Um, on this, so you're all aware, we'll be looking, this is um planning for our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. We have some key dates. As Jared mentioned, Senate Bill Two has made several changes to um how our approval of our budget and our property tax rate work. And so these are some key dates, as he mentioned, that will condense our budget um cal- and tax calendar. And again, these are subject to change. So these are a little, these are tentative at this point. Um, and there are potentially some options that the council can take um because there is a disaster declaration in place. But for now, these are the dates um to accommodate the May first election and also to um allow um for approval in time to date changes related to Senate Bill Two. So what we're targeting is to file a proposed budget um through the City Secretary's Office, and it'll be on our website um by July ninth. Then we would be looking to have the Council Budget Review Workshop in the middle of July. We normally have that about the first week of August, but we'll need to pull that back to take these additional actions to get um the timeframe met. So we'd be looking at the week of July twelfth, um possibly going out through um July fourteenth. Then this next se- um section is really the part that's still in fluctuation at this point. So we're looking about the timeframe of July twenty-ninth through August sixteenth. There are three council meetings that are going to be needed. The first meeting is where council will vote on a proposed tax rate. At that point in time, they also um announce when we will have the public hearing on the budget and the proposed tax rate. Then we will proceed to a second meeting during that time period. Um, but there are publications that have to go out to the public in their certain timeframes. The longest one, I believe, is on the budget, and it has to post ten days before the public hearing. So we're going to be working around those timeframes as well. The second meeting where council has to take action, there will be a public hearing on the proposed tax rate and a first reading on the tax rate, and council will take a vote on it. There will also be a public hearing on the budget and a first reading on the budget where council will take a vote. Then the third and final meeting is um where we would have council do the second and final reading on the tax rate and take a vote, the second and final reading on the budget and take a vote, and then there's a vote to ratify um the property tax. This would also be the chance, according to Senate Bill Two, if council approved a tax rate that was above, that exceeded the voter approval rate, which Senate Bill Two outlines is about three and a half percent above um the prior year rate. Um, council could exercise the option to call an election if, or council would have to exercise the option to call an election if council approved something, a tax rate that exceeded that voter approval rate. Um, there are some certain changes in effect um related to a, the, a disaster declaration being in place last year and this year. Um, but it also, oh, it would require council actually to do another meeting to, before any of these meetings occurred, to direct us to um calculate a voter approval rate up to the eight percent instead of to the three and a half percent. And so that is um an allowable um change from Senate Bill Two. Um, and it could apply if council so chose um this year because we do have a disaster declaration that is still in place. And there's some more caveats to that that we could certainly go over with council. Um, but wanted to get this in front of you all um to kind of start thinking ahead of what we're going to be looking at as far as a condensed budget um timeframe for this upcoming year. And can I answer any questions?
Jared, just to confirm that you're communicating that data to every city council candidate, just as a courtesy to them so they can begin to block time on their calendars. Um, because these meetings are vitally important to what the city council does. It's not, and as you can see, there's not a lot of flexibility in it. So it's, you know, if somebody's vacation is already scheduled or whatever, people are making those decisions right now. We want to make sure that we're respecting that and getting these out there as soon as possible. Uh, and then just the other thing I want to reiterate is this is a, this is a new law, and this is outlining the process only. So this, these are just dates and potential dates. I, there's nothing to take away from this presentation that um, you know, taxes are even being discussed because that's, that is for a conversation after we see a proposed budget in accordance with this outline. Just want to be very, very clear on that front.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're, we understand this is a very compressed timeline, like you said, and like you encouraged us to do, that we've communicated to all of our uh candidates along with all of our uh incumbent council members, this timeline, this uh very aggressive timeline. Uh, it will be a challenge, uh, but we, we, we have a very clear way forward. We've, we've identified how to get it done. Uh, and we'll be able to get it done. We've also communicated other key dates, not, not uh uh budget-related, like strategic planning sessions, et cetera, uh to all of our candidates, to make sure that whoever gets elected knows some key dates that they're, they're going to have to be able to accommodate uh or, or want to be able to accommodate uh inside the next four, five, six months. Uh, so yes, we have sent that out. I do know that we'll also be sending out any amendments to that because we know there's going to be at least one uh of those dates that is changing as it relates to uh PRAD and final certification of that, of taxable values. So we will be adjusting at least one of those dates uh this week or next week for both everyone on council and also all of our candidates that are running for council. Want to make sure that we are set up to move uh productively and aggressively forward uh immediately after the election with council on the budget.
Great. Anything else or questions about that, counsel?
Uh, yes, Jared, I'm, I'm not quite understanding what SB two did, why it's condensed. Um, you know, so, so you're saying that it's a condensed calendar, but what exactly happened in that that's other than requiring the vote on a lower cap?
So if you exceed the voter-approved tax rate, you have to be approving the budget in time to have, to call the election. The deadline to it, so there's a little bit of conflict between SB two and election law. So election law requires that we call the election no later than August sixteenth this year. If that, I think it's ninety days before the election, you have to call the election. So that deadline is August sixteenth this year. So we uh have to start working backwards from August sixteenth, which is our deadline to call the election. You have to approve whatever you're going to do prior to that, so you can either call or not call. You have a, you have a go-no-go decision at that point. Now, because we are in a year of uh a declared emergency for some part of the City of Amarillo, uh, uh, the state law also directs that we can, uh, we, we, we no longer are subject to the three and a half percent uh automatic rollback rate. We can use the eight percent rollback rate. Uh, and we've never, we've only once exceeded the three and a half percent in the last ten years. So it's not something that happens very often. Uh, and now that we are in a, a declared emergency, cities in Texas will be uh subject to the eight percent uh maximum, but they have, there are steps that we still have to take uh in all of these scenarios.
And so Jared, my other question is, so the typically we would meet in August. Is that right? We normally did our budgeting workshops in August. So it's definitely condensed for staff, your preparation time. It's backed you up a month to get ready for those meetings. Council will still have the same number of workdays?
Yes.
That, that we've had in the past. It's just um a month earlier. So it's basically condensed it to eleven months for you in getting ready versus when we typically would have done it.
And for council, you're going to have the same amount of days, but the distance in time between your meetings might go down a little bit. Uh, because, you know, we, we're starting at roughly the same time, maybe just a little bit later for you. Uh, but you're finishing six weeks or so early because you used to, you had to finish by September thirtieth.
Great. I think that's good clarification in that the council is still going to have their full time for discussions, for evaluation. That time to review and approve or make changes has not been condensed. That's not been shortened. It will have a full viewing and full time as has been done in the past. It's just that clock has changed and we've got to get started sooner on that than we have in the past to be ready for the year-end, all year-end requirements.
Yeah, and I would say also the amount on your meetings, while you're going to have the same number of opportunities to discuss and, and edit and all that stuff, the amount of time between those meetings might go down. And where we didn't have to do called meetings previously, we will be doing called meetings during this year to address some of the compressed time frame.
Right, especially with the two-week-only meeting, eh, on average, normally two times a month now, that uh kind of pushes that requirement, possibility of calling a called meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Anything else on that, counsel? Sorry, my-
Hey, that's okay. Let's move on to item one D, an overview of the progress on the Amtech Career Academy.
Right, uh, we have a tour scheduled for later this afternoon, but to present this item, because they don't have the, the, the media on hand, the technology on hand to be able to do that presentation, we're here. We have Kevin Carter, uh, President of, of AEDC. Kevin, I butchered that. You're President, CEO, or, and apologize for messing up the title. You'll clarify it for me, but uh to present this item and answering questions, counsel, yes, Kevin? Do I have Kevin Carter? I see AEDC.
Yes, sir.
There it is.
All right, we're trying to get on camera. Let me get my mask on. You don't have to have your mask. Just put us on.
Not to my surprise.
So good afternoon.
Hi.
Hey, we're really super excited about the tour this afternoon, but to give us a little um kind of uh preemptive talk about the uh Amtech and what's going on out there, we have the principal of our current ACAL and is also going to be the new principal at the Amtech Career Academy, Jay Barrett with the Amarillo Independent School District is here to uh give us a presentation on what's going on at Amtech. Jay?
Don't see him, but Stephanie may be moving him. Stephanie, do you see him in the other?
Don't see him in the attendees. Any other names I might want to look for, Kevin?
No, I think that would be it. Let me um, let me see if I can, let me see if we can get ahold of him.
Okay, we're going to go on and do consent agenda, so.
Come back to that, maybe. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, anything else on item one E, counsel? Any future agenda items that you want to request? Or any reports from the city manager?
Mayor, I'd like to um request a committee out, the, update or a board on Parks and Rec for our next meeting.
Okay, sure. So, um.
And I'm meeting for, I serve on that board, so I'm just saying that I would bring, I would bring a committee report.
Okay, I got it. You're bringing a report. I thought, okay, let me get a little more information on that. Great. I know what you want now. Francis, you'll help us get that on the next agenda, please. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, anything there, counsel, that you see that should come off for more discussion or questions?
I did have one question on um the consent item F on the uh staffing contract. And I know that is uh, you know, it's an issue for us to be able to submit and get a reimbursement on that. Um, but I just wanted some clarification if that contract we're authorizing goes forward, and if so, for, for what time period? And uh what dollar amount?
Right, so it's a uh one-year contract. It's a not-to-exceed amount. It does cover the amount of money that we've spent so far, which is approximately two million dollars. And I've got uh Kevin Starbuck and Casey Stotin who can, can correct that uh for me. Uh, so there is an end uh and not to exceed. It does allow us to continue coronavirus response operations uh with our Angel Staffing. Uh, there's also item G, which is our lab services. Uh, but I, I think it's important enough. We are still doing everything that public health always before and will do going forward. But we're also doing a significant amount of work, vaccinating, contact tracing, testing, et cetera. So this will allow us to continue with that Angel Staffing Contract so that we can bring in the additional professionals, both nurses and nurse assistants and others who can help us with those services. We will do a diligent job uh making sure that we are not spending money or having people on staff that don't need to be on staff through this contract because we do need to be good husbands or, or good managers of this contract. We know that these monies are not unlimited. We know they are, in fact, limited. We only have so much. Uh, so we want to make sure that we uh uh preserve it as long as possible. So Casey, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, sir, we covered it.
Okay, stole your thunder, sorry.
You're good.
That's because she had been providing the information all day on this and all week, so uh, anything I'm saying is, is because of the good work that Casey and Kevin have done equipping me to be able to answer your questions.
Casey, I know it's hard to anticipate the trends, and this allows in an as-needed basis for you to be able to, so the city makes a request through this contract for, for additional staffing. And so I, and, you know, not to hold you to it, just kind of seeing the trends now of, of the cases, the change possibly in um number of vaccinations. Do you have any feedback on just kind of the trends of when you would see us reducing our, our numbers in this area?
So we staff as needed. Um, so we cert- we have reduced um over time. Um, well, you know, we're able to staff up if we see an increase in cases or, you know, certainly an increase in patients coming through the clinic. Uh, we have been able to reduce the number of staff based on our patient load with the um with the nurses, the temporary nurses that we had supplied from the rack when they left. Then that has, you know, we have certainly needed additional help at the clinic, so um, you know, we're able to anticipate our need and then have the staffing there um based on that need. But we also anticipate additional grants coming in from the State Health Department, and some of those have even longer expirations, and so um this contract will be very helpful in that way.
It's interesting that as our activity has gone down a little bit recently, our spend might actually go up a little bit. our spend might actually go up a little bit because we were receiving some, we were receiving a number of staff members from the rack that we weren't paying for. They were supplied by the state, but as they've gone away, we've still had to bring in nurses to continue doing those vaccinations. Only now we're paying for them through this contract. So it, 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 just because our activity has gone down, there is not a direct correlation to a reduction in cost for that. And in some cases, that cost has actually gone up because as our demand has gone down, the state has withdrawn those resources and, and reallocated them to other jurisdictions, appropriately so. But there is not a direct correlation between number of vaccinations, number of contact tracing, number of tests and our spending in this scenario because of the support we were receiving from the state.
Okay, see how, how quickly are you able to kind of shift? So it's like if we were needing to increase the number of staff or decrease, is that, is it, you know, I'm thinking from a business standpoint of like two weeks advance notice that you could indicate we are going to need more or we would need less? Or just kind of the timeframe in how quickly or how long it takes for you to anticipate needs that you have to communicate?
You know, it's, it's a delicate dance to be able to anticipate the need before, you know, before that increase up. We watch the numbers, we watch kind of what's happening around the country. But we also want to make sure that we have staff on board that are trained before the surge. And so we, it's hard to let people go that are really trained well. And so we have kind of a really good core group of people who, um, who work. And that's one of the reasons why it's really nice to be here at the civic center. Our contact tracing staff are in one room and then, you know, the vaccination center is in another. And so when it gets slow in vaccinations, they, you know, go over and do contact tracing and vice versa. So they're very cross-trained in all of the different aspects of the work. And so we have a, a good core group of people. And then when we do need to staff up, then we're able to work with our staffing agency. And they're usually able to get us, um, a, a, a pretty quick turnaround, especially depending on the number of people that we need. So we, we can do that quickly, but we'd really try to have a really good core group of people, especially for training and, um, and those purposes.
Anybody else have a question? Okay. We'll move on then. I guess Kevin Carter, are you guys ready? Well, wait, let's go ahead and take a vote on this. I forgot that was, we did a sidetrack, didn't we, Elaine, to answer that question? We're back on the consent agenda. No other questions though? A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I move to, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with a five oh vote. Okay. Kevin Carter?
Yes, ma'am. Give us about 10 minutes. We just got ahold of Jay and he was, he got stuck in a classroom.
Let's go on to item three A then, council. Consideration of a resolution agreed service plan on the proposed annexation. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we've got Andrew Freeman, managing director of planning and development services to present the item. We are talking about an annexation plan for the, and this is very much closely related to everything AEDC is doing in Randall County right now. So Andrew, take it away.
Yes, sir. So this is covering a couple of, I'm going to cover both items really in one at first. So the next item's the actual ordinance for the first reading and the public hearing. But I'll cover really the back with this resolution for the agreed service plan. So a little background, this is approximately 100, being requested for annexation by the landowners. This is a landowner initiated annexation request. The property, of course, is owned by the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. So they are the applicant in this case. It's in the vicinity of Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue. And the anticipated development, of course, is the industrial business park similar to Centerport in Potter County. So over the last six months or so, we've been negotiating an acceptable service agreement, detailing the responsibilities if annexation were to occur, documenting what the city is responsible for as well as the applicant as far as any infrastructure or funding toward the annexation. This highlights just a map of the area. You can see farmers to the north, Hollywood or the loop to the south, Georgia Street running north and south. On the right is just a, a recent aerial from Google, just to give you an idea of the, the property. And then of course, on the east, you can see the rail, rail line that would be used to service the park as it expands and develops. As far as the timeline for considering the annexation, April 2nd notices were sent to those required by state law as well as published in the newspaper. Today, the council is considering the agreed service plan and authorizing the city manager to execute the document as well as the next time on the agenda is the public hearing and first reading of the annexation ordinance. And then on April 27th would be the second reading of the ordinance considering the annexation. As far as highlights of what's included in the agreed service plan that's in your agenda packet that you received on Friday, I wanted to mention a few of the, a few of those highlights. The dedication of additional right-of-way of Georgia Street by the applicant. So that is going to be a five-lane road, two lanes go in each direction and a turn lane down the middle. So that will require the, the additional right-of-way for that project, but it will be funded by proper proposition $1 that were included in the 2016 bond election. So that project was already funded and proposed before this development was in discussion. The applicant has agreed $2.3 million toward drainage improvements. That's required as part of that for the street. And would also be required to construct remainder of any water and sanitary sewer lines in Georgia Street to supplement with the city. Amarillo being responsible for any upsizing as part of that project. The annexation analysis included your packet also had a more detailed fiscal analysis for your review or the highlights of, of the funding sources, the revenues. One thing to point out, when you're looking at those revenues, as far as the property tax, we did not show tax coming in during that initial 10 to 15 years, knowing how Centerport was treated and how economic development goes as far as considering tax abavance in the future. We didn't want to show upfront full tax value, knowing that that might be something future councils would consider. So even with that, it came very close to, to being breaking even. I believe it was net just over a million. Sure, just showing the revenue sources, but once you consider the, the property taxes coming online, that number will get a lot closer and actually start making money in the near future as those projects come online. Happy to answer any questions you might have on the agreed service plan.
Can't see everyone while we have anything up on the screen, so y'all just have to speak up. Okay, do we have a motion on this item then?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution to allow the city manager to execute an agreed service plan related to a land or land owner initiated annexation request for approximately 191.07 acres, which is currently vacant in the vicinity of Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue.
Been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Smith to approve this motion, I'm sorry, to approve this resolution. Are there any questions or for, need for further discussion from the council? All of those in- Yes?
Uh, not a question, but just, just a comment on what Andrew just walked through in laying out some of the cost benefit analysis of doing an annexation and the sharing of, of costs. That, uh, that's been, I think, a much needed improvement in those negotiations. And as we look at annexing additional land. And so, um, you know, as, I know there's a lot of information went through quickly, but I just wanted to highlight because I think it's very, very key what Andrew reported on of where it becomes profitable to the city and not a long-term cost. And being sure when we make these decisions that, that we are taking that into consideration and appreciate Andrew and his work and the, uh, different entities that have partnered with that as well in doing the cost benefit analysis.
Thank you. We do appreciate you, Andrew. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see five, that passes with a five oh vote. We're going to, um, go back over. I think Jay Barrett's ready to do the presentation on item one D. So welcome, Mr. Barrett.
Well, thank you.
We're running short on time, sir, so I'll tell you that we appreciate your being here with us, but brevity is appreciated.
How much time?
Can you do it in five minutes?
I'm glad I ran off some handouts for you. I actually have a one pager, a one pager for y'all at the tour that actually is a four pager. So let me get into this real quick.
Okay, great.
Let me share my screen and we'll get into it. And see if I can get the one, there we go. All right, you able to see that?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, let me move this. I'm going to present, so I'm going to forego a lot of the other stuff that's in here. But as you know, the future is definitely bright at Amtech Career Academy. You can see some of this content online on our Facebook page. We're writing a vision script that mentions that the past is prologue to future success. So looking ahead into the future is really where we have been. You can see our teachers, our community has been involved in this for almost two years now. So we've put a lot of work into this location that was at the Sears building and Hastings building. Sears was built in, or opened in 1959. There's a story out there that says that when Sunset Center opened in, in the 50s, that there were 100,000 people who went through its doors that first day. When I was telling that story, one of my students said, Mr. Barrett, maybe we'll have that many people come through our doors on the first day. And I said, I sure hope not. One thing that I do not want to tell you is though, currently at Acal, we have 1,250 students. Already signed up for next year, we have 2,900 students who are interested in taking courses at Amtech Career Academy. This is the existing building. It's 196,000 square feet. I guarantee you, it will look nothing like that when you come today at four o'clock. It will look more like this. So we took 196,000 square feet, turned it into 231,000 square feet. We added a second floor. We have a storm shelter down here at the lower right. It holds 1,800 people. When it's not a storm shelter, it is our law and public service academy. This is what it looks like, the first floor with its top down. You'll see we have two different sides, this west side, which was the big Hastings warehouse. And then this east side, which is the Sears building majority. We have this opening in August this year. And then this half of the building will be phase two and it will be opening in January. So we've kind of, going to have a little bifurcated action coming along in fall, but we've got it all covered. Everything's going to open up smoothly and everything's going to be really good. This is just a look at what it, what it appeared like in the past and this is what it'll look like in the future. Just to kind of give you an overhead visual, we have a 30-foot digital screen on this side as well as this side. We're replacing that old sign that's there and it's going to be replaced with that brand-new, state-of-the-art digital screen that will be run right out of our television studio that we'll have. As you know, this is, uh, we can see y'all down there. It's about 2.2 miles away from downtown, uh, very close to a lot of different things going on. Arts and Sunset will be here, Amarillo College will be here. It's going to be an amazing space. So skipping ahead to that, uh, this is what I've got a handout for that's more like a four pager. So I'm not going to go through all of this. Just know that we have one academy, nine different schools. Here's the second page of those schools and over 30 different pathways. So for instance, School of Medical Arts will have several pathways, including patient care technician, certified medical assistant, EKG tech, pharmacy tech, registered dental assistant. All of that will be under the School of Medical Arts. So when you get that handout today, um, I'll put that in your hands and you'll get to see all of this. We have over 30 different pathways. These additional highlights I'll be going over as well. But just know that we will probably be hooking up with some of y'all to help us be visiting professionals to come and breathe life into our kids about the world of work. So whatever career you have, you're going to be coming to Amtech, I guarantee you, and giving us some of your wisdom. Success Center, most high schools have a career center. Ours is going to be more like a college and career planning and placement center. Even if you've been a student in the past here at Acal or an AISD, you can come through our career center to get re-skilled and upskilled through us and through Amarillo College. So if you're 25-year-old who's realized that you don't have the skills you need to meet the current market, we're going to be able to work with you to get you some skills, maybe taught right there at Amtech in the evenings or in the summers through Amarillo College. We're working very closely with them to align all of our programs, not to overlap, but to align so that we can get a really good ecosystem going. Success 101 is a unique course. We are create, we've created that this year. It will give you the employability skills. We're going to basically brand our students that they are like a 3.5 out of a 4.0 scale on this rubric. We'll follow the kids, not only that first course, but every course that they have. So we'll be able to track their growth. And all of this goes to community involvement, public facing properties that we'll have, including a banquet hall that's be rentable. We'll see that today. The Career Lyceum, which is basically that Law and Public Service Academy. Biz Town and Financial Park for junior achievement is amazing. We'll have a lot of discussion about that in the future. This is, I'm going to show you some of these renderings. This is where we'll look at today. It's the Aspiration atrium. You'll walk in there, it'll be beautiful. This is the north side entrance, so this side was the south. That's where we'll gather today. We'll also look at this view. Obviously, it's not going to look like that yet, but all who enter will learn is going to be hitting you as you walk into this building, no matter where you are in our Aspiration atrium. You'll be able to see that. I jokingly say that as you exit, there will be a sign on the door that says, "All who exit will earn." So that's going to be the potential for a lot of our students. We're talking about a potential of changing lives here. This is kind of, we have three of these different collaborative spaces throughout the building for students. This is their space, it's a collaborative area. They'll get to gather together to collaborate on projects. Maybe they're waiting for class to start. Maybe they're waiting for the bus to take them back to Tascosa or whatever home campus they're going to, grab a cup of coffee at the bistro and pastry and, and go. We all have culinary arts. These are some of the renderings of our, our pastry kitchen, for instance. This is our culinary arts lab. Cool thing about this is that we'll have a camera stationed on the chef and those video, those monitors up there will be able to give our students access to what the chef is doing at all times at their specific table. This is actually the bistro. This will be a, a hub for not only our students, but in the front of the building, you'll be able to come by anytime and get coffee and pastry on your way to work or you can hang out out front. Maybe you drop your child off and, and you just want to maybe hang out there, grab a cup of coffee before you're going on to work or whatever. It's going to be a public face. The neat thing about this too is we'll have a glass wall that separates the bistro from the dining facility. When you open this entire thing up, we're going to have about 260 spaces for people who want to come and have their annual events here, maybe their awards ceremonies. Maybe there'll be some trainings that will take place. It's going to be an amazing, amazing facility for our community. Law and public service, this is a look at that facility that 1,800 people can be in. It's about 8,000 square feet inside here. We'll have movable walls partitioned off, so it's four large, it's one large room or four very nice-sized classrooms. We'll also have a courtroom, so we'll invite you all back sometime to sit in these chairs at our courtroom and have your city council meeting there. So anyway, it's, that's going to be kind of fun. Animal science, we'll be working at continuing doing the great things that we're doing. I've, I, I tell you, I've never seen a horse this big nor have I seen one that transparent, but you know, that's the way it is. Transparency is the thing. IT Academy, this is going to be an amazing space. You'll see that it's all interconnected. We have glass up instead of just walls. So this allows students to share experiences, to see what other students are doing. We're going to have everything in there, cybersecurity. We're going to have programming, software development, web development, computer maintenance and repair. We're going to have our own geek squads, public service for our students and for our community. It's going to be amazing. Medical arts is fantastic. There's a video I'll show you that has even more than this in there, but this is just one of our newer facilities and that, or newer programs, and that's registered dental assisting. This is our AMP classroom. These are not periodic tables. These are actually television monitors. So again, the instructor will have a, a camera at the demonstration table and all of that's happening, all of what's happening is that that table will be happening at each student's table. Across the hall- Across the hall, we'll have this Anatomage Theater. This Anatomage Table is a giant iPad table. It contains four human cadavers, multiplicity of animal cadavers, and over 1,200 human pathologies that students will be able to identify. They'll start looking at that really heavily in AMP in the junior year, but they'll get exposed to that even at the freshman year. In our Manufacturing, Electrical, Plumbing, HVAC, this is our newest rendering of the 15 welding booths that we'll have. It's much, much larger space that we have to work in. This is a one picture of our machining lab, another shot of our machining lab, CNC router that's pictured there. Construction Academy, we'll have both indoor and outdoor construction academy. You'll get to see that. So this is indoor, and obviously out that big garage door will be our outdoor facility. Just another look at construction. Robotics, we don't have a whole lot of shots of this, but we will have a giant Mechatronics Table, AEDC. Texas Workforce Commission have partnered with us to get us a grant to purchase this Mechatronics Table. It's going to be coming in any moment now. We have a robotic, a Fanik robotic arm with six-axis arm. It's an amazing thing that our students be able to practice on. It's great for manufacturing that will be coming in or already is coming into Amarillo, so we look forward to helping with that. This is a cool thing that we have. You'll be able to see this large space. There's the second floor that we've added. We did not build a gymnasium for basketball. We built a robotic drone coliseum. That's what this space is. To the right, you'll see our learning stairs. This is gonna be a great space for guest speakers to come. We'll have our students sitting here in sort of an auditorium fashion. You'll have these six television monitors, clicker, and a wireless microphone, and you'll be good to go with all our students. This is another look at that from the top floor. You'll be able to see how we'll host elementary and middle school, robotic competitions, drone competitions. Bell Flight is already wanting us to get into the drones more and more so we can do some obstacle courses like they do down in Fort Worth. If they can do it in Fort Worth, I know we can do it in Amarillo, Texas. So this is another look at Business Marketing Finance. We'll actually have another classroom that I don't show here that has the NASDAQ ticker circling around, so we'll actually get kids involved in the market. Media Arts Communication, this is our advertising studio. You'll be on the second floor, looking out onto Plains Boulevard. We won't be able to go up there today because I just saw a video where they took out this brick wall, and it was an amazing video. It was pretty cool, but all of this came tumbling down, and so that's going to be replaced, obviously, with this glass as they build up that masonry structure on the second floor. Autotech, Auto Collision. I will have to say this will have a street Toyota flavor to it because I didn't take it off yet, but we hosted Texas Toyota, the Workforce Development Director from the Gulf Coast, came up here last week and brought someone with him from the T-10 School in OSU. They were amazed at our, our, not only the capacity that we have to present Autotech in such a way as we're currently doing it, but the things that we're going to do. I was amazed at their enjoyment, not only of Autotech and Auto Collision, but really of the entire facility that you'll get to see today. They could not get enough. I didn't, they, they had flights to catch and all this. I, I think they missed their flights because they were there so much. But because we brought them in, because we gave a presentation, now street and Texas Toyota are gonna be able to give us all kinds of parts. They'll give us drivetrains. We've got Corolla engines coming in. They're actually giving us a 2018 Corolla to be able to use as a more, a modern vehicle, and so we'll be taking that thing apart, putting it back together many times over the course of the next few years before we get another car. This is a paint booth, $100,000 went into this paint booth. It's stuck in Italy, so if y'all have any connections in Italy, please tell them to give us our paint booth. It's in transit, but as you know, the supply chain is tough right now. This is another look, and so that's gonna be out of Plains Boulevard. This is a video, and I won't, I won't, I'm gonna take you through all of this today. It won't look like this exactly because it's an active construction zone, but I'm certainly willing. I was talking about the Six Steps to Kazan. I was really trying to sell Toyota. I'm telling you, I love this because it's total quality management, and we use that in this district. And anyway, we have a great partnership formed with Toyota. And so I'll be, any questions that y'all have, Mayor?
Council, questions for Mr. Barrett? Obviously, we're gonna go and tour that facility. Y'all can ask him in person when we get there, but.
Well, thank y'all for the opportunity.
You have definitely wet our whistle. We are looking forward to being there, hearing more about it, and I really appreciate the time that you spent bringing this presentation because it gives us a vision for what we're about to see. And I know we all have questions about it.
Just to hold your hand under your, your chin because your jaw is gonna drop, I guarantee it.
Well, now you've sold us, and now you'll have to deliver on that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm telling the truth. See y'all over there.
But yeah, we look forward to being there soon.
Okay, bye.
Okay, thank y'all. Okay, back counsel to our agenda on item 3B. Mr. City Manager, if you could go ahead and present that item.
Hi, Mayor. We have talked about this item a number of times. Andrew is screen sharing on this, but this is something that's not new to us. We've talked about the projects going on here. In order to do the projects that we have going on, we have to annex this property. We've done the annexation plan, and this would be the first reading and public hearing on the annexation of the 191 acres, just over 191 acres for the AEDC property in Randall County, adjacent to Georgia Street. Now you can see where it is. I know there might be questions. This is a pretty abbreviated presentation. I've got our Managing Director of Planning and Development Services who can answer any questions Council has, but I know we've talked about it a number of times recently. What questions can I or Andrew answer for y'all?
Counsel, any questions?
Today is the public hearing and first reading.
Hey, at this time, I will open a public hearing on this matter. If there's anybody who wants to speak for, on, or against this item, you can do so by dialing in now, or if you're already on the call, you can raise your hand. Instructions are there on the screen.
If you wish to speak on this item, please press star nine on your telephone at this time or click the raise hand button in the Zoom app. Mayor, we do not have anybody wishing to speak on this topic.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3B.
Yes, Mayor, I move to ordinance number 7915 to annex approximately 191.07 acres of land into the city limits in the vicinity of Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue.
Okay.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer. Any further discussion or questions about the motion? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes with the five oh vote. Counsel, on item 3C, Mr. City Manager?
Right, Mary. This is a first reading and a public hearing to consider an ordinance rezoning a 15.39 acre tract of land on the north side of town. This is the next addition to the Vineyards Residential Development. So it's, we have, the applicant is Tom Nielsen, Tommy Nielsen, adjacent land use. It's consistent with all the adjacent land uses. Future land use is rural. Planning, Zoning Commission Act acted on March 22nd, approved at 6th, and recommended approval by city council. If there's any questions, I or Andrew can answer those questions. The proposed area is on the southwest corner of the Vineyards Development.
We need to move into doing a public hearing on this item as well, so I'll, I'll open the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak for, on, or against this matter. You'll see instructions on the screen as how to dial in. If you're already dialed in, you can push the raise hand button, and Stephanie will correct me if I just said any of that wrong.
You are correct, Mayor. Press the raise hand button in your Zoom app, or if you are connected by telephone, press star nine to let us know that you wish to make one. Mayor, I am not seeing anybody that wishes to speak on this topic.
Thank you, Stephanie. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on item 3C and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 7916 to rezone a 15.39 acre tract of unplatted land in Section 191, Block 2, A, B, and M survey Potter County, Texas, to change from Agricultural District to Residential District 3 in the vicinity of Broadway Drive and West Hastings Avenue.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve a motion to pass ordinance number 7916. Are there discussion from the council or further questions on the motion? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with the five oh vote. Item 3D is to consider a resolution that would be adding additional infrastructure to the approved venue project of the Amarillo Potter Event Venue.
Hi, Mayor. This item would authorize the venue district to spend resources or funds on infrastructure that contributes to the effectiveness and operations of the venue district. It does not expand the footprint of the venue district. It does not change the area of the venue district, but there is a number of infrastructure in the area that contributes to what they do and facilitates what they do, and would authorize them to spend money on those, in those areas. I have Laura Storres that can answer any questions from council at this time, but it's, it, it does authorize spending. Laura, can you put the picture up of the venue district footprint and then the areas outside the district that have contributing infrastructure where the funds would be allowed to be spent in areas that would contribute to the effectiveness of the venue district footprint? Perfect. So as you can see, the green area is the footprint of the venue district. The red area is areas not in the venue district footprint, but with infrastructure does contribute and participate in the effectiveness and operations of the venue district. It would allow venue district funds to be spent in these areas as well. So they are within the overall area of the tri-state fairgrounds, but there is a slight difference in what the venue district is composed of and what the fairgrounds are composed of. But a lot of these facilities, all of these facilities, contribute to the operational effectiveness of the venue district. Is there any questions that I can answer for council on this or that Laura can answer? Because I'm probably gonna kick it to Laura in this case.
Jared, if I may add one more thing to that, just as a reminder to council, this does not change any of the revenue sources going to the Amarillo Potter Event Venue District. They have set revenue sources, and those were put in place back in 1998 when the citizens of the city of Amarillo and Potter County voted on the venue projects. So nothing changes from a revenue standpoint. Just the, the projects at both the Civic Center and the tri-state fairgrounds have related infrastructure to those original projects, and now those existing funding sources can be utilized to do, you know, repair, maintenance-type projects on these related infrastructure. And I'm now showing the map of the Civic Center area. The green is the existing footprint, which was the north area of the Civic Center, the expansion, and the red is the rest of the Civic Center and a parking lot that are considered related infrastructure as defined by Local Government Code, Chapter 335. So with that, are there any questions I can help answer?
Counsel, just speak up. We, I can't see you fully, so feel free to jump in.
Did we move through that pretty quickly? So any questions you have, we can certainly go into great more, a lot more detail.
And this resolution was approved back in February by, by the venue district board on February 22nd, and we also took this, a very similar resolution to the Potter County Commissioners on March 22nd, and the resolution was approved by them at that point in time as well. And so council will be the final piece to approve this resolution.
Hey, I'm not seeing any questions. We have a motion on this item then.
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution to authorize the addition of related infrastructure as defined in the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 335, to the voter-approved venue project of the Amarillo Potter Event Venue District.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this resolution. Any further discussion or questions, Counsel? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes with the five oh vote. Moving on to item 3E, which is consideration of a resolution as support for the establishment of a regional first responder training center by Amarillo College.
Mayor, you pretty much hit it on the head. This is a resolution supporting the establishment of Regional First Responder Training Center at Amarillo College. We have on the call with us Chris Stark with Amarillo College. We also have Mark White with Amarillo College. We have Kevin Starbuck, who's Deputy City Manager, been working on this project with Amarillo College, and it would utilize federal funds for the creation of this training center at Amarillo College, would be a necessary, or a very, as I said, to our region and also to the city of Amarillo. Is there anything, Kevin, Mark, Chris, that we need to add to that? And council can also ask any one of these gentlemen or me, any questions you'd like.
If I could, we could run through it real quickly. Stephanie, I think, has some, some pictures of our program. When you're taking your tour of Amtel, if you'll peek around the corner, you'll, you'll see the old JCPenney's building. We, we're in the process of purchasing that and should, should be able to close on it really soon. We were contacted by Congressman Ronnie Jackson that there's some earmarks that we are eligible for applying for. And so we, we thought of this project as being just a great project to submit. It's, it's a regional project. It'll be great for Amarillo College, city of Amarillo in, in the region. It will house our fire academy, our police academy, and our EMT program. It's a hundred thou, a little over 100,000 square foot facility, two floors. And you can see, we will construct a fire tower. We'll have bays there, and then instruction on first and, and second floor. This project is coming in at about $13 million. And so that's what we're gonna request from these earmarks is, is $13,000, or $13 million, sorry, to, to do this project. We also have Dr. Cameron Cluness, who's our Vice President of Academic Affairs, on the call if you have any questions on the, the programming or, or what we're gonna do in, in the facility.
Well, I apologize for missing Dr. Cluness. She's a great asset out of AC and a great asset to the city. I'm very sorry that I missed you, Dr. Cluness.
Yeah, but we, we at AC are very excited about this, this project. Again, Jay said of his excitement for Amtech, we are just as excited. You know, we're gonna be just around the corner from them. We're partnering with them and hope, hope to do some really good stuff with them. And at this time, we'll answer any questions that you might have in regards to the, the submission of the, the funds.
Counsel, questions?
There won't be a cost to the city of Amarillo. This will just endorse and support the application for fund, for the creation of the operation.
Thank you for clarifying that, Jared. What happens, Chris, with this project if we don't get earmark money?
So we're, we're moving forward with it. We, in 2019, the citizens approved bonds for Amarillo College, so we will use bond funds to, to do the project.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate Congressman Jackson trying to get funding from the federal government to help us on local projects like this. So that's, that's wonderful that you guys are flexible enough with your projects that you can move quickly and get that application.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I can add, we, we also have regional support. We've got about over 20 letters from sheriffs, police, police departments, county judges throughout the region in support of the project as well.
Great, thank you, Chris. The other question? Any other questions, council? Mark, we appreciate your being here. Dr. Cluness, thank you so much for the work y'all are doing to bring great things like this to the community. Totally agree with your tagline that so goes Amarillo College, so goes the city. We, we see that. We appreciate you guys doing the work that you do. Council, do we have a motion with regard to this item on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the, of the City Council's of a regional Training Center by Emerald College to provide training and development for law enforcement, firefighting, and emergency medical first responders to benefit the city of Amarillo and Tex, in the Texas Panhandle region.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Dr. Sauer. Any further discussion, council, or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. But we've gotten that taken care of, and we always like partnering with Emerald College, especially when it doesn't cost us any money. So y'all keep bringing those kind of projects where you already have the price tag covered. We think that's great. Thanks for being here, guys.
Thank you, thank you, council as well.
Item 3F is to consider a resolution on Federal Aviation Administration grant offered to our airport. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, item, item G are both related. Item F is 75, a little over $75,000 to provide relief from rent and middle annual guarantees on airport parking, airport car rental, and inter, in terminal concessions operations. This money has zero match, is provided through the Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, CARES funds, and is strictly for the use at the airport for these uses. Now, if there's any questions I can answer, I'd love to answer them right now. We also have Michael Connor, Airport Director, to help answer those questions.
Questions, council? Michael, what a great job you've done at the airport this year, challenging times, but you, you and your team have been ready to present infrastructure projects as federal dollars have come down for those as well as operations. So we appreciate the work you're doing out there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have a motion on this item, council?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution approving the Airport Corona Response Grant Program Concessions Addendum Offer Grant from the Federal Aviation Administration to be used by the airport to provide relief from the fees to on on airport car rental and in sessions, any other purpose for which airport revenues may be lawfully used, which is in the amount of $75,630.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Hayes to approve this resolution. Any further questions or discussion from the council?
Excuse me, Mayor, Mayor.
I think I heard them both. Councilmember Hayes, did you second the motion also?
Okay.
Okay, okay, but I'm glad we're clarifying. Got a little background noise, so it might be hard for all of us to hear, so.
Yeah, everyone can mute their front, their, their.
Yeah, if y'all don't mind, just maybe click your microphones on to mute for a minute and we'll just take a vote. Maybe that background noise will go away. So with that motion made and no questions from the council, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Great, thank you. That passes with the 5-0 vote. And then, Mr. City Manager, item G is related, but we need a separate vote on anything to add?
Yes, ma'am. This is just for airport operations. It is not for any facility or, I'm sorry, it is not for any capital projects, but it is for airport operations out at Rickhusman International Airport. It is again provided by the Federal Coronavirus Response Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, not available for use on aviation development projects, but is available for use for operations at the airport. As we've all seen, the number, the amount of traffic at the airport has gone down precipitously over the last year. These are funds provided by the FAA through the CARES Act to enable international airports and FAA-associated airports to continue operations during this downtime.
Any questions for Michael Connor?
Mike, I had a question on that, the percentage of traffic compared to a year ago. Where, where do you think we are as a percentage of our former activity?
Right now, I think we're between 70% to 75%. We've, we've seen quite an increase the past three weeks, so it's, it's coming back. And I think people are just anxious to get out of the house and take some vacations and that sort of thing. So we're anticipating movement up to probably about 80% by the end of June, so looking at some positive numbers coming along.
That's huge. That's great. And at the lowest point during all of the COVID last season, what, what was the lowest percentage we got as far as our capacity usage?
5%.
Oh, wow. Almost 100% shutdown.
It was, it was pretty bad for about a month and a half.
Absolute ghost town at one point.
You anticipated my follow-up question, how long we were at that low. That's, that's, well, that's very encouraging, very great news to hear the numbers where we are today.
And I, I saw a data that was in our, I can't remember if it was in the PAPA report or something that I was looking at this week that showed that we're about 2/3 of available flights from where we were pre-COVID. Is that number, am I citing that correctly?
Yes, I think that's probably pretty, pretty accurate.
Mayor, I think you froze. I don't think she's thinking that long on that answer. Just contemplating that.
I did freeze. Just how many flights a day, Mike, and how does that compare to where we were pre-COVID?
Well, I, I think in general, we've lost about five or six flights out of the 19 a day that we had before, so we're, we're anticipating getting some of those back. Unfortunately, most of those were Southwest flights. But we're, we're anticipating getting some of those back in the, in the midsummer, most likely.
Great. Any other questions for Mike, council? Okay, we have a motion on item 3G.
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program Grant Number 3-48-0007-048-2021 from the Federal Aviation Administration for the use by the airport on operational expenses and other purposes for which the airport revenues may be lawfully used in the amount of $2,736,206.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the resolution for item 3G. Any further discussion or questions from the council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That item passes with the 5-0 vote, and we'll move on to item 3H, which is to consider a resolution that authorizes the submission of an application to reorganize a general-purpose foreign trade zone. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We're creating a foreign trade zone. It's a large foreign trade zone, and there is some a lot of education opportunities here for Kevin to provide us. Kevin Carter, President, CEO of AEDC, to provide us with the differences of foreign trade zones, trades zones, a free trade zone. What I can tell you, though, and what is of paramount importance to us, is this does not cost us any revenues. It doesn't cost us any property tax revenue, no real impersonal, personal property tax revenue. So there is a, almost 100% positive in, aspect to this item. There is a small amount of cost for AEDC, just over $4,000, to create the foreign trade zone. But I'm going to throw it to Kevin to give a very brief presentation on this item.
Thank you, Jared. Mayor, council, what this item would do and what we're asking you to do is just to, to do a resolution that authorizes us to submit on our behalf, a resolution that would create an alternative site framework for the existing foreign trade zone. That number is Foreign Trade Zone Number 252. There's currently 32 trades, foreign trade zones in Texas. What it does is it gives us the ability to use this as an incentive tool for a business that is currently not located within the 4,000 acres at the airport. What it does is it allows us to designate company XYZ that's over in northeast Amarillo that imports parts, puts those together, and then exports those back out of the country. It allows us to designate that existing business as an alternative site for the foreign trade zone. So it's actually a benefit. We've had a few legal fees with this, but it's going to be a, a benefit that we have to use in our toolbox as an incentive when recruiting companies, or also to use for our existing companies that may find that they want to be in the import and export business. So really, what's a foreign trade zone? A foreign trade zone is just a secure designated location that allows a company to take advantage of tariff relief on importing something, putting that together, or making something, and then exporting it back where they don't have to pay tariffs on the import and the export and get double taxed on that. It's just a tool that we can use for our businesses or somebody new that we're trying to recruit. So that's kind of the shortened version of what a foreign trade zone is. We're, our cost is a little over $4,000 on the legal fees. We used a consultant out of Kansas City to help us do this alternative sign, site framework. It does encompass any place in Potter, Randall, Armstrong, and Oldham Counties. Those four judges in those counties have also signed off on this resolution as well.
Great, council. Any questions about this?
Kevin, I just had a question on, hearing you explain that it applies to tariffs and not the other kind of tax abatements, property tax issues, loss of revenue. So I'm guessing this is, this is something that strictly goes through the federal government?
Yes, Mayor.
You're making this request of the federal government?
Well, it's not a request from the federal government. It just allows us to, to have that benefit for the businesses that we have in those four counties. But it is, has to do with customs and the tariffs that they impose and not, not local tax.
Okay, let me, let me clarify that. So we're authorizing submission of this application. So who, who are we applying to? Who are you sending this application to? I'm sure it's written here. I'm missing.
So, so this, this will, is, is on our behalf or on the city's behalf, and it will go to the federal government to the company, it's the, or not a company, it's part of the government, it's the National Association of Free Trade Zone. I think that's the, is the governmental agency that runs that. It's, it's created by Congress in the Foreign Trade Zone Act of 1934, so it's a governmental program.
And timeframe for approval on things like this? Is this a pretty quick turnaround, or is this?
We're just, this is the last step. We'll have this sent off to the consultant, and we should have, I would think in the next two weeks, we'll, we'll have what we need.
Yeah, no, no longer than 30 days.
That's great. That's not the answer I expected. Applying to a federal government agency of something, so that's great. Thank you.
That's why we used it, that's why we used the consultant, because they've already done several of these. My guess is they did several of them in Texas already, and so they've already got, they, they know the, the right way to do it, and so that's why we used a consultant instead of us trying to do it ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item then?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the resolution authorizing submission of an application to reorganize a general-purpose foreign trade zone in the vicinity of Randall, Potter, Oldham, and Armstrong Counties.
Then moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve this resolution. Are there discussions or questions from the council about the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. I see a 5-0 vote. That passes unanimously. Item 3I, back to Kevin Carter. Kevin?
Mayor and council, this is action, this item is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on project number 21-03-01. This is a workforce grant opportunity. The Texas Workforce Commission, through the Workforce Solutions Boards across the state, offer grants for high-demand job training. And they partner with local economic development corporations to expend funds, and the TWC matches that. So we have the ability this year to take $50,000 and have that match from the Texas Workforce Commission and be able to help Emerald ISD out with some, with some material and some equipment out at the AmTell, the new AmTell Career Academy. So with the $50,000 that we're asking you to approve us to expend, they are going to build, they are going to buy aviation training equipment, and with the matching funds, they're going to build, they're going to be able to buy some additional welding materials and equipment to go with those welding machines that they have in welding bays out at AmTell that we will be able to see here in a few minutes. You'll be able to see the welding bays and some of the equipment is, that's what they're going to use the match for. So this is a great opportunity for us to leverage local funds with state funds to double our money in essence to help grow our kids' training in the high-demand job opportunities that we have here in Amarillo. So our AEDC board approved this 4-0 on March 22nd of 2021 at our board meeting.
Good. Questions, anybody? Have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the Texas Workforce Commission's High Demand Job Training Initiative, Demand Job Training Initiative Matching Grant in the amount of $50,000 to be used for aviation job training and welding equipment, which will be administered through the Panhandle Regional Planning Commission on behalf of the Texas Workforce Commission, Workforce Solutions of the Panhandle, and then the Emerald Independent School District and Emerald Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
Then moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this project from the AEDC. Any further questions or comments from the council? I love it when we get to spend other people's money, like the Workforce Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
That's great. If there are no other comments or questions, council, let's vote on this motion. All those in favor? That passes with the 5-0 vote. Thank you to the Texas Workforce Commission and the Workforce Solution Board. We appreciate their partnership very much.
And also, I'd like to point out that PRPC helps us write that grant, so I don't want to leave them out as a great partner in this. So appreciate their team and our local workforce boards as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kevin, for mentioning that. They are often the silent partner in the background on a lot of things that happen in the city and the region, so I definitely want to give them a pat on the back for their work. That brings us to the end of our action agenda, and we've got a couple of items on executive session, so I'll ask the city attorney if he would read our dismissal language, please.
You go ahead to Texas Open Meetings. That closed session of the Emerald City Council was announced on, on April the 13th, 2020, at 3:32 PM on the following authority, Section 551.072, discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, sell of valued real property in public discussion such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and council will see you quickly over in that executive session where we go to, for the, the ISD. Thank y'all all.